Jane, I'll panel that so we can do it. All in one. Okay, we're back. All right. New business one, discussion for submissions to appoint on the Board of Selectmen until the next election. And I'm going to turn it over to the town clerk. Actually, I'm going to keep her up there because I timed it just right with your liquor license and your class two renewals.
Hi. How are you all this evening?
Hello, Jane.
How are you, Jane?
I'm good, thank you. So, as Ms. McKenna came and talked about her resignation, I wanted to read to you from Article Three of the Charter, Section Three One in General, G, Filling of Vacancies, Number Two. So, Board of Selectmen, if there is a failure to elect or if a vacancy occurs in the office of selectmen, the remaining selectmen may call a special election to fill the vacancy and shall call such special election upon the request in writing of 200 voters of the town. Now, that being said, we have nomination papers that will be out in January. So, for that seat, if you called a special election, and we had that, I'm just going to give you all the background, is that nomination papers will be out January 5th. The election is in April, and if we called a special election for that one seat, it's going to be about $6,000, where they can get their nomination papers in January, talk about their candidacy, and be elected in April. So, I put that for you for discussion.
Sure. Okay. So, because I was under, I thought we could appoint somebody, so I was mistaken, and I didn't read the charter, I guess, on that section.
I went back and read the charter again myself.
And through the chair, this special election would then, the term would be until Selectman McKenna's position had been completed?
Correct.
So, it would be a one year?
It wouldn't be until April, it would be until her position was up.
Which I think was the same cycle as yours?
I can tell you both on.
Twenty twenty seven? Okay. So essentially, it'd be a one year.
Yep.
There'd be a one year and then a three year.
So now, it would say we don't have a special election. It would be open, her seat would be open this next election cycle, right?
Her seat would be open, they would run for the position for that one-year seat from April to April of 2027, and then they would run again for their three-year seat if they so chose.
Now, that only falls for selectmen, because I, like with the school committee, that, because that's
Correct.
We have that authority to
Correct. I'm going to tell you that you're special.
Okay, we're special.
In the charter.
Nobody has. Nobody's got our back.
So.
All right.
I'm sure you want to
So, that was my, I was the understanding that we could appoint, so.
That's what I thought, too.
But I'm glad we can, and I, my sentiment would be, I will not waste taxpayer money for an election that with this, what, four meetings left, five meetings left to, you got two January, two February.
And by, by the time, if you did call a special election, to hold it within 30 days or a date that you chose, we'd already be in the, the running of it, and you'd probably have two or three meetings left.
Right.
Yeah, I don't want to waste taxpayer money.
No, I think if the circumstances were differing, maybe even from a timing standpoint, if this were, if it was happened in June or something, that's, I mean, that's a decent amount of time, but I feel like just even the confusion alone on this, I mean, the money, of course, is a factor, but just then the confusion of pulling papers and everything, again, with how constricted it is, I would be more inclined to just
200 signatures.
Have it be on the ballot with all the others. Is my opinion.
Yeah. And we don't have to vote on who's more, just discussion.
Yeah, I echo that sentiment, absolutely.
Through the chair, I think, as I thought, from my experience on school board, we could appoint, I would have said, oh, yeah, we got to appoint, this is great, we got to make sure that that, you know, people are represented, but knowing that this would, we would have to call a special election, it's going to cost taxpayers $6,000, and quite literally in 30 days or 35 days, people can pull papers for
January 5th, actually.
Oh, so, less than 30 days, people can say, you know what, I want to throw my hat in the ring. I would also look at this from the aspect that I don't want to interfere with, with that. So, calling a special election and then also tipping the scales on, on that, it just makes no sense. So, just waiting until January 5th for people to pull nomination papers, there isn't even a meeting in between today and January 5th, so everyone will be fully represented, and may the best person who wants to run pull their papers, get their signatures, and let democracy happen. So, I would, I would support just letting it.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
You're welcome. If we, if somebody's going to be absent, let me know ahead of time.
I know, we got the coordinate.
Because we can always cancel meetings, I mean, that's not, if we, there's only going to be two or three of us, well, we can still go with three.
You can.
We only need three votes, and, but if, if two were going to be out on the same night, let me, let us know ahead of time, so.
Right, yes.
And you can still do Zoom, so if people needed to
Yeah, oh, yeah, we can Zoom, that's right, I forget about the Zoom.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now, might as well keep you up there.
That's what you said, so I'm like, okay, let's get it done.
All right, approve the 2026 liquor license renewals.
Okay.
Okay, Brian's going to read them.
Unless, was there anything that we needed through the chair with
No, I
Madam Clerk? By head of time, or should I just go ahead and make the motion?
Well, you know what, I'll ask my question that I ask every year, if everybody's all set with their inspections and their taxes.
Yes, so I spoke to the building inspector this evening, he was all set with everybody. There might be an exit light out or something, but he, he has addressed that with them, and he will make sure that those are done. We do have a few people that need to pay personal property. What happens with that is, tonight when you approve, I call everyone tomorrow, let them know they were approved, and let the people know who owes taxes and how much. They will go and pay the treasurer-collector first, and bring me a receipt, and then I will issue their liquor license to them.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Perfect, yeah, and so hearing that, I will make a motion to approve the following liquor license renewals, license type restaurant, all alcoholic beverages, One Ten Grill, A&amp;D Pizza and Pub, Micono CB, Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, Calabria Restaurant, Feng Asian Bistro, Milbury Old Time Inn, Puffin's Restaurant, Showcase Cinema Deluxe, Longhorn Steakhouse, number 5226, Red Robin Gourmet Burgers, TGI Fridays, DeWey Locke in LLC, Yard House 2024 approved, which I'll go ahead and include that in here, license type general on-premises, all alcoholic beverages, the St. Charles Hotel, license type package store, all alcoholic beverages, DBA Lenny's Liquors, Anika Gupta DBA Milbury Liquors, AK Milbury Package Store, Village Noel Deli and Spirit, Gurety Supermarket, license type club, wines and malt, Charles F. Mini Post VFW, license type Farmer Series Pouring Permit, 19H malt only, Penny Pincher's Brewing Co., license type Farmer Series Pouring Permit Spirits only, Spicy Water Distillery, license type package store, wines and malt, Danielle P. Spring DBA JT's Corner Store, Riverside Inc. DBA Riverside Mart, license class annual general on-premises, wines and malt, Still Farm Boarding Inc. DBA Still Farm, license class annual restaurant, wines and malt, Elm Drafthouse Theater, license class annual restaurant, wines and malt with cordial liquor, liqueur, The Coop.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Jane, I was just curious, a while back you had sent a boat, on-premise beer and wine, could have full liquor licenses, it's out, did it, nobody?
So, no one has approached me about that.
Okay.
It would only affect, I believe, three of the establishments, so I'm assuming that none of them wanted to go to a full license.
Here, I was thinking, it was like Riverside and stuff, I read it all wrong, and I'm like, oh, cool.
And I believe most of them actually wouldn't really have the proper
Seating.
Seating and area to be able to do a full liquor license.
Okay. I was just curious if anybody
Yep.
Been on that.
But nope.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
All abstain.
You're going to abstain, okay.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Next, class two.
And through the chair, I was going to have my motion be contingent on the approval of the police inspections, but I believe we may have received those already, and those are all set, right?
We have, if I can take a moment, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
So, we have one that came back through the police department that they could not get a hold of, we have not been able to get a hold of them, that's Mass Motor Auto LLC. So, if I could make the suggestion that you, we send a certified letter to call the owner in, to speak to him before we approve that license.
So, I've been on the board like 13 years, 14 years, and I, every year, that same spot has been an issue.
Right.
So. And I noted, I went by because I'm
It's changed hands
Nosy person. And there's no cars there. There's not a one car.
Yep.
So.
I'll make a motion to approve the class two renewals for the following businesses, Armor Auto Body, Auto Premier Cars LLC, Francis R. Mercadanti DBA Merc Truck Sales and Service, Gary D. Gover slash Michael D. Gover, Gover Sales and Services, Grafton Auto Wholesale, John K. D'Enzo Jr., D'Enzos, D'Enzo, John, and Kevin Jr., Laramie &amp; Callie Inc. DBA All Points Auto Sales, Michael S. Cronin DBA Micro Motors, Miranda's Auto Sales Inc., Panda Motors, Harold Perdian, Progressive Auto, and Turnpike Auto Sales.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstain.
Okay. Sorry, Nick, I'm a yes.
Okay, so three to one, I had three, one abstain. Where are I, like, all these located?
I have the list.
You can email it to me if you like, I just
When you go out to look at Christmas lights, you can check them all off and go down the list.
Maybe I could, maybe I could put a car in my garage instead of my vinyl chairs.
Should be in there.
That sums up 2025, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's on the attachment you sent us, Jane.
Do you have it on the attachment?
Okay. All right, I'll look, I'll read it.
Will you do me a favor on the attachment? Now that I'm questioning myself, will you make sure that
Oh, I found it.
The correct address of 519 Southwest Cut Off? Is that Mass Motor, or is that Auto Premiers?
That's Mass.
That's Mass Motor.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure I had the right, right one.
I recognize it immediately.
And I think we're all set, correct, Madam?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to the rest of the management update. I think I get everything on the front page, correct?
Yep.
All right.
So, under management update, appointing John Merrow to the Cultural Arts Council. I always forget to do the appointments, so I'm trying to put them in a different order. So, I want to thank John for his offer to volunteer. Some personal personnel updates, we had some really good interviews last week for a new town planner. I am very happy to report that Connor McCormick did stop in at the Chain of Lights and was dazzled by our Whoville and me wearing a Cindy Lou Who wig. I was also pretty shocked at myself for wearing it, but he's doing really well so far in his new position in Belmont. But we did have some great candidates in hoping to make a decision in short order and make an offer hopefully by the end of this week, which will be fantastic. The laborer position that's open at DPW, we did post it internally per the contract, but there was no interest, so Nicole will be posting that externally by the end of the week. Obviously, you know, because Katie was here, that she has accepted the position of Finance Director, and she's supposed to begin January 5th, which I will be ecstatic about because we are in the throes of meeting with all the department heads and looking at the FY27 budget, so that'll be great timing. The, there's a couple of van drivers, part-time, at the Senior Center who are going to be out for a while. I believe Lori is still looking for maybe two or three folks that maybe help out with this for now until folks come back, but I think anything can happen, you always need a deep bench, there's three different vans that they run out of the Senior Center with the RTA, so if anybody's interested, certainly contact the HR department here or contact the Senior Center. I'm sure you are going to talk about this, but I just wanted to thank everyone who came out for the Chain of Lights. This was our second year as an official stop at the Town Hall, and I just want to thank everybody here, especially Town Hall, who got super creative and super competitive more than my door, we do a door decorating contest, and we have the residents vote, and Whoville did not win, the town clerk and her team provided the ballot results, which I'm revealing here live, that it was the Board of Health and Building Department door that won. I think some of that has to do with everybody, Nicole saw, said, vote for door number five, but our door was actually number three.
That was Nicole.
She is not in charge next year, she's fired. But everybody did a great job. I do want to give a shout out to my lovely boyfriend, Ed, for playing the role of Grinch for four hours. He was very hot in there, and he's going right to heaven. He was voluntold, he did not have anything to say about it, he did his, he was asked and told. And I also want to really give a shout out to my dog, Graham Cracker Clark, who served in, he paid actor role of Max, Max, he was absolutely perfect. The only little episode that we had, which Jenny, our mayor, witnessed, was that he peed in the fake snow in Whoville, which I thought was kind of funny.
I thought it, that's kind of funny.
But other than that, it was, he was fabulous. But everybody got super creative, there were a lot of department heads here that had all kinds of interactive activities. Jane and her team, always super creative. I didn't have a chance to go over to the library or the mansion, but I did get feedback from my elves that came in, who talked about all the activity that was going on downtown. I'm just so proud of how everybody pulls together, it's, you know, obviously, you have all been here for a lot longer than me, it's just magical, and I'm so excited that the Town Hall is part of that now.
Me, too.
Because it's just, don't, we don't want you just come here to pay your bills, we want you to hear, come here and learn about what we do, and, you know, put faces and names and, you know, see that we can have fun, too, and we want people to come here and have a good experience. So, I think if anything, it's just really nice to build those relationships, I'm just really excited, and I can only imagine what next year will bring. And I want to say that the Grinch already has some ideas for next year, which I cannot reveal. So, that was exciting. Other news, budget prep, I am in the throes of meeting with all the department heads last week and this week, I have a few more departments to meet with, and so far, so good. We'll see how it all shakes out after I look at all the requests, but a lot of hard work goes into this and really thinking about how to strike that balance of what's a need and a want, and all of it is really need, it's just trying to figure out how to prioritize that. So, more to come on the budget, I just wanted to flag for the board that there's two CBAs
I can't believe they're up already.
I know. I, literally, right after I started here in August of 22, was my first union negotiation with the police department, so that one is up. I already spoke with Keith Gasko, I think we might start looking at some stuff in January, nothing's been set. Obviously, I will bring whatever the requests are to the board for discussion, there's a couple of requests that I would like to bring to the table, but I'll obviously discuss that with all of you before we start those negotiations. And I did have a meeting with the SEIU Union for Cafeteria Workers, Secretaries, which I don't, it's very antiquated, but that's what it's called, Secretaries and Custodians. The town manager has a vote, and I did this for MTA, and also the SEIU Union for the IAs, and it's all alphabet, too. So, we met, we, we learned what their asks are, I have sent over some language to the school administration that I think would be good to put in that mirrors some of the things they're asking for that we're kind of looking at, but it matches the language that we've just updated in some of our contracts, so things actually look the same in different places. So, I don't think there's going to be a lot of back and forth, there's not really a lot of crazy requests or anything, great group of people, and, yeah, so I've had one meeting so far, and I appreciate the school always including me in those conversations. Senior Center, the official opening, reopening date is December 15th, there's a welcome-back holiday party on the 16th, I have been told that Elvis will be there, is that accurate? Nothing says welcome back and happy holidays like Elvis, but everybody's been incredibly patient. It was a lot of work to get this done, even just to get the bids to come back. As you know, Andrew said we had three bids, so it took a long time, three times bidding it. I know Julie Van Arsdaleen was over there today on behalf of the Health Department, looking at the kitchen, the rugs were cleaned, so all of the equipment and Elder Services are going to be moving back, I was told tomorrow, so things are, it's going quick, they're trying to get everything cleaned and put back so they can have no issues opening the door next week. And I want to thank Chief Strom and the Fire Department guys and Denise Camuso, their admin, for hosting Lori and Josh and all the Senior Center staff. You know, they were busy, there were a lot of senior, I've gone over there, there's a lot of seniors coming in, looking for help on fuel assistance or what have you, they have done incredible work, just at least trying to keep engaged and, and do pop-up food pantries and all of those things. So, I just want to thank Lori and her team for trying to have a good sense of humor, and also the Fire Department for their, their roommates over the last couple of months. And also, a couple other things, which I apologize if this is in anybody else's packet, but Hometown Bank generous donation of $4,300 to the Senior Center food pantry, which is outstanding, and certainly is needed and will be used. Also, we've had a lot of staff and employee, sorry, staff and residents who have donated food here for the Central Mass Veterans Support, Inc., we have a box out here, and it's filling up, so we'll have some donations. We also want to thank the Senior Center for putting some tags together for our Giving Tree, which is out here in the lobby. These are specific requests for families and kids in need in Milbury, everything from socks to pajamas to whatever, I like that it's really personal, and I've seen a lot of staff and people at the Chain of Lights take some tags. And again, want to give a shout out to Matt Stensel and his crew, they did an awesome job with the snowstorm last week, and, yeah, and just finally, Mark Hollis, can't say enough about him and all the projects he's working on and trying to get our buildings in good shape, Mark's awesome, and I just want to give him a special thank you. Any questions?
When do those tags have to be back?
Um, I
I thought
I think it, I don't know, I would say probably by the end of next week.
I know my tag says the 22nd, but then I saw another thing on here that says the 15th, so I was a little, I don't know.
I'll double-check, I, though there was a flyer
I think that, is that
I have a letter.
Yeah.
It's a letter, yeah.
Okay. Given true, but I just have to pick up a couple of things, and I'll drop mine off.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
Let's have a quick question, do you have an update on the RFP for the Milbury Fire Station, the center of town?
We are going to get on that with the new planner.
Okay.
So, we have to, we had to, once Connor said he was exiting, we decided that we needed to just give it a minute, so hopefully, that's one of the first projects, that was actually brought up in the interviews as well, to say there's some hit-the-ground-running projects that need to be done.
Okay, I just was curious about the maintenance, too, on it, it seems like there's some things that are starting to show age because it hasn't been used in about a year or so, is there any budget for ongoing maintenance until we do something with the property? Just because there's things that have been left behind, like the sign for Arbor Day, which has passed, I don't know if that's already been removed, but I just wanted to follow up to make sure that we're keeping up with the property so that it's not an eyesore, the center of town.
So, it's interesting, because I don't really know whose, who's flag that falls under, because it doesn't belong to the Fire Department anymore. I don't know that that's a DPW thing, I don't know if it's a facilities thing. I did not see that sign, I did see it about a month ago, but that doesn't mean it's not there and it's just blending into the scenery now.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I know exactly what sign you're talking about, so I'll look. We do have it heated, it's on a very low temperature so that things don't freeze, because that was the same issue that we were concerned about last year, and just maintaining it so that things don't freeze. So, I will talk with Mark Hollis, and I'll just see if we can make sure that we're getting eyes on it. I, I think there's still, we weren't in there, we, that long ago, because we were doing the yard sale, but I don't know if there's periodic checks, and I just want to make sure that somebody's got eyes on it.
Okay.
So, I think now, because it sort of is now in our camp, I, I will talk with Mark, and I'll see if I can figure out who's going to be putting eyes on it, and just kind of looking around, because there are still bricks that fall out from time to time on the right side.
Yep. Thank you.
Of course, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. All right. I lost my place. Okay, roundtable discussion and citizen feedback, limited to three minutes, discussion on agenda items heard at this meeting only. Joe, come on up.
I'm going to piggyback off of the manager, if I may. So, I am happy to come and tell you that we only have five spots left for Citizens Academy.
Oh, nice.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yay. So, very excited about that. The 12-week program is going to be starting in February, so I know I have two applications out there that are supposed to come in, so we may only have three spots left, so I'm very excited, and it's going to be great interactive with our departments here to learn more in-depth about them, and then they get to come to the town meeting, they get to come to the election, and I will probably put them in a position to work, maybe for a half hour to an hour, to figure that out, and see how we run it and what we do, and then they will come before you on May 12th to graduate.
Oh, cool.
So, I just kind of want to put a little plug in for that and let people know, if you want to get in, it's a hot commodity now, so.
Hurry up, get your application.
Yes, and I got two applications from the Chain of Lights, so.
Oh, that's awesome.
Very excited.
Yeah.
So, thank you for allowing me
Okay.
Thank you, Jane.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to dates to remember.
Oh, can I just add one quick thing? I just wanted to speak to my abstentions from earlier for new business six and seven, I just wanted to publicly say I had to abstain due to business relationships I have with some of the businesses that were listed, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to dates to remember.
Is that in my packet? Because I don't see it in here.
I don't see it either. Maybe we don't have any
There, there isn't.
No.
Actually, Amy mentioned that to me today, there was really nothing.
Just remember, Santa Claus is coming.
That's really, that's it.
Make sure you're on the nice list, make sure you're on the nice list, watch out. But, so then mail?
Okay, we'll go to mail.
I was going to say, I could probably recite that bench one off the top of my head.
But I can't.
Oh, he came on, he hadn't been in a week or two, and, you know, the bucket was chock-full, I'd seen us, I'm like, all right. was chock-full. I'd seen us. I'm like, all right, am I going to have to go deliver this? But he showed up today.
My laptop is doing this, so I'm trying to.
Okay.
Wait for it to load. We'll see if it goes. Not responding.
Do you want to use my?
I might need to use yours. Oh.
Okay.
It's, it's there, maybe. That's what I get for not using the laptop. Okay, there we go. Uh, Dear Chairman Kremsik and the Millbury Board of Selectmen, in accordance with Mass General Law 44, Section 53A, I respectfully, uh, request that the Board of Selectmen accept the generous donation made to the Millbury Senior Center to authorize the expenditure of these funds. The donation will be deposited into the Senior Center, uh, gift account and we are incredibly grateful. The check is for $500 and ends in 6889. The next donation, uh, in accordance with the Mass General Law, uh, this is the same language. Uh, this is, uh, for a donation from Country Bank for $2,000 to the Millbury Food Pantry, Chelsea Jewish Life Care and $200 in memory of Alfred Blake, and the Worcester County Food Bank for $1,000 to the Food Pantry, uh, submitted by Lori Keef. There's another letter. Um, Dear Ms. Kremsik and the Millbury Senior Center, received a generous donation. In the donations listed below, in accordance with Mass General Law 44, Section 53A, we are requesting that the Selectmen, uh, accept this and authorize the expenditures for the use of the funds. This is for, uh, Central Mass Auto Auction Food Pantry donation, $500. Country Bank generous donation of $2,000. Bank Hometown Food Pantry donation, $4,300. Mill Church Food Pantry donation of $200, submitted by Lori Keef. And that's it.
We have to make a motion to accept those funds.
Correct. I will make a motion to accept, um, should we go one by one or do you want to do all of them?
Yeah, you can do all of them. I don't think.
Okay, excellent. I will make a motion to accept the funds and to, uh, allow them to be deposited into the Senior Center gift account and authorize the expenditure of those funds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's it for money, huh? Okay, that's pretty good.
A lot of money.
That's a good take.
Oh, my gosh. Very generous.
All right, on a good note, community events and positive stories about Millbury. I'll start. I'm not, yes, the Chain of Lights was wonderful. I had a blast. I was exhausted, but I, I think the highlight of my month off of being a Selectman, uh, was the, um, the Fire Department stepped up big time and honored Benjamin Haglen.
Oh, thank you.
To become an honorary firefighter. It was incredible to see. The place was packed. I was pleasantly surprised. It was, it was a wonderful, wonderful day and I, like I said in my speech, when, um, Deputy Chief Silver reached out to me about it, of course, I was a yes. And, um, I told him, Ben, I've been a marshmallow since. And I was a marshmallow that day. It just was so rewarding to see, you know. He was, from the minute he got off that fire truck, he was gone, go crazy gone. But it was all good. It was a really good turnout. And thank you for swearing him in. It was, what a great town. It, like Chris Knaff would say, the greatest hometown in America is Millbury. And I, what is that? Oh, Santa on the fire truck. Oh, that's not in our Dates to Remember.
I don't have any info on that.
Where was that on?
Oh, you have it in front of, yeah, feel free to, yeah. It's on Facebook.
Communications Division of Public Access.
Hmm.
We found those. So, speaking of the Fire Department.
Yeah.
How fabulous they are. Um, so, Santa is going to be coming around on the fire truck. So, headquarters in the center of town will be December 20th. Station two, which is West Millbury, will be, uh, December 21st. And Station three in East Millbury, Santa's going to go there after. They're also going to do Santa on December 21st. And then Station five is actually on the 13th. So, if you want to go out and see Santa on the fire truck.
Oh, cool.
Thank you.
Thanks. I, I just have one more good note and then I'll let you guys have a good note. Um, I just want to reach out to everybody and that donated food and the food drives, um, the Central Mass Veterans Support, Inc. on 146 is, I get phone calls. I met people there on Sundays, just taking in food. I mean, the generosity of people this year has been phenomenal. Um, we also gave, I, I brought two big giant Santa Claus bags full of toys to the police toy drive. Um, Collaborate had a toy drive. I brought toys for them from the Central Mass. I got snowed by the, uh, Millbury Historical, uh, Millbury High School Honor Society. So, I reached out to them and said, I can give you some toys. So, um, that said, that was a good project for our town to allow to come in as a Central Mass Vets because not only do we help vets, we're helping everybody else in, around town. So, thank everybody for their generosity. Okay, who else wants to go?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to share just one little anecdote about, um, our friend, Ben, our honorary firefighter. Um, I had the privilege of being his neighbor for, since I moved into the neighborhood. Um, and I, I just had to add this personal anecdote. Um, that kiddo is just a beaming, beaming, uh, with pride and it was really great to see that. And he just has a heart of gold. Um, he always, I mean, we have new neighbors that moved in. I mean, next day, he's over there playing with those kids. Um, and he's just an, an awesome neighbor. And I just wanted to highlight that. He's a great kid and he's going to be a great asset to the Fire Department. Um, definitely a morale boost and he is a burst of energy. So, I just wanted to share that, too. And then I wanted to just give a shout out to the Police Department for doing that, that, uh, toy drive, um, on the common. It was a huge success and, um, I have to say I got a good laugh, um, at the costumes. Um, nice job. And, uh, it was a great turnout. It was nice to see everyone. And I think that that's really what's great is that it's a great point of community engagement and bringing people into the fold. And he really, I mean, they, they always do this. And it was a, it was a great afternoon. I mean, I, I stopped by right before, um, a holiday party and it was a really good turnout. So, I was very happy to see people show up for them.
Anybody else?
I, I think I, I had a very fun time at the Chain of Lights. My daughter was blown away. She loved it. And shout out to Graham again.
Thank you.
I had so many friends, uh, I posted it on Facebook. I had so many friends like reach out saying, that dog just killed it as, as Max. It was outstanding.
Well, Levi said, how did you get the real Max here?
I'm so proud of him.
That's great, yeah.
Do you have him extra cookies?
He deserves them.
Yeah, he's a great puppy.
And, and I agree with, I'm so happy that Town Hall's a part of this, too. Um, I mean, it was wonderful how nicely decorated this was. Uh, you know, a own little mini Whoville over there was great, too. But it was a big hit. So, um, I think this was a very, very great addition to the Chain of Lights.
And thank you all for coming over and supporting everybody.
Part of me wants us to get involved in it, but then I'm like, no, I can't because then I won't see what's out. Sorry, that's the selfish me. Okay, everybody all set. I just want to make mention, we will be having a meeting December 18th, short and sweet.
Yep.
Just tax, well, everybody's welcome because it's a public hearing. Um, we'll be doing the tax classification that night at 6:00. So, so now it's a, it's an off-night for us, but it has to be done. So, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas because we won't be meeting. Well, I could do it in, I'll say it now and I'll say it in the 18th.
That's all right.
So, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. I will, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.